Okay, let's call this meeting to order. And just for the fun of it, let's start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Wow, why not?
We're up here by the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, since we did something out of normal, I will officially wish Jeff Plaster happy birthday.
Thank you.
For the audience out there, remind them to send them a text or an email that wishing happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
We probably should acknowledge the passing of our dear colleague, Bob Chalmers.
Absolutely.
Long-term county leader and county councilman, Mr. Dan Dean.
Fifty years of service. He'll be hard to replace, that's for sure. He's just the nicest person that I've come into contact with in county government.
He definitely will be.
Dedicated servant leader. Okay.
And a commiserating IU fan.
And a commiserating IU fan. Wow, he would not let that go, no matter how many bad seasons they had. Okay, Attorney Ron Cross, what have you got for us?
What are you right now?
The council did approve the contract with EDC this morning, so we're good to go with that and get that back to it.
Obviously, you got all the signatures you need from us, so it's just a matter of getting it to the valve.
Let's get that done. So, nothing else?
I mean, do you want me to share the templates for the MOU and the...
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Okay, then I'll...I know, I think we've kind of reached an agreement because we've got two that are in place. I'll shoot those to the other commissioners and the figures.
We talked about Ron is creating templates for the help program. Randoms of understanding, not the profits that are a part of the strategic investment plan and will be receiving funds from the county to carry out those projects. And then...
Things you need to keep in mind, I mean, I don't, I'm not aware of all the time issues that some of the units might have, but to the extent that we're involved with political units and we're using the interlocal agreement, that has to be approved by the physical bodies of the county and the unit, which means our council or what have you, as well as our county council, which doesn't need quite as regularly. So, that's a time factor. Then we have, we record them, but I believe you have been 60 days after their execution.
So, an interlocal agreement with the other units of government that we're participating in their project and helping develop those. Share those with us as they come through. Anything else? Do you want to talk at all about...
I'll get that assignment of the proprietary rights to the logo. I'll try to get that by the next, if I can catch him. I don't think it's an issue.
He's agreed to let us use it and give us the ownership.
Good.
So, is there anything that we need to know about the Clyde Moberly situation? Anything?
I need to talk to Gordon. Supposedly his crew is going to be out there Friday.
On Friday, they were out there and surveyed.
I don't know how much work they got done or how much they have yet to do. I'm not aware of any issues, at least I haven't heard from...
I spoke with him. He said it went well and he was grateful for the sheriff's department providing an escort. And he spoke with several residents and they have asked to meet with us. So, some of those residents, I believe, coming this Wednesday.
From next Wednesday afternoon to talk to us.
Well, there's a process we need to be following, so I'm not sure that's going to get into the process because I think we have to give notice of a public hearing.
This would not necessarily be the public hearing that takes place, but they had some concerns and wanted to talk to us about it.
You're not listening yourselves and you're troubling them.
Exactly.
Right, as long as we remain silent.
So, you're saying we just hear what their concerns are?
Sure what they have to say because I think, I think until we have the product that's according to survey, then with that, when you view it, make sure that you're comfortable with it, then you decide the next step of the process is to go ahead and try to invoke the law and use it, have this declared a public way. Then we give notice, like all the affected parties, which should be all the providing owners, through a hearing.
Okay, well, we will take it one step at a time. Any other questions for Ron? If not, let's go to Mr. Higginbotham.
You've got your weekly, I left my sheet that I passed out to council this morning. I think you've heard some of my comments this morning. I know glad you were here, but very briefly, on the sheet, I've added a new column. That was as a result of the last couple of meetings you've had with council to approve that ARPA spending. So, I'll be tracking ARPA spending that is attached to the projects that falls under me. And this sheet will continue to track the council one-time expenditures out of their fund and it also will track those projects that you assign to Q court. The far right-hand column down at the very bottom lines, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 28, gives you the balance. It's one of those respective funds that are labeled there. And so, unless you just have a specific question about that sheet and projects, I'm not going into greater detail, but I guess the question I have is, some of the funds for those projects were encumbered. And so, Ron and Steve both left a comment on if we're not going to use that money then to complete that project, it would simply go back into the general fund as unappropriated.
That's what I think.
That's correct.
So, on this one, let's see, the annex generator, there'll be, what is that, $1,125 that will be...
$1,125.
Eleven hundred.
Yeah. I thought you said a lot of...
After 30 minutes after...
Same thing.
Okay, so, the fact that that is in that column is labeled one-time remaining balance. That's how much money of the one-time that will be left over when the project is completed, is that how much that still will be paid out of the one-time money.
Add the, for, look at the generator. So, the generator has 282, 634 in it, and the one-time has $1,125 in it. You put those two together and that's the remaining amount of the contract.
Okay, so the one-time remaining balance are the dollars that are yet to be spent and will be spent out of the one-time money. And so, after you take out the encumbered amount, which is down there on line 26, once you remove that, line 25 then has what the balance of the council's one-time fund has. Okay, so there was $2,00533, 810, take out the encumbrance. Encumbrance, which is two lines down. And you're left with the fund balance without encumbrance.
Right.
Which is 1,000, or 1,000, 1,353,688. You mean 1,353,688? Okay.
What's in line 25?
Yes.
So, then that's...
So, that is what will go back into the general fund or is that, that's what will be spent out of the encumbrances?
I suggest, and this is what I suggest to council, at the end of the day, I think it's their call with the auditor, but I think the entire encumbered amount goes away and becomes unappropriate back into the general fund.
Okay.
It doesn't go away, it's just...
Goes away from the count.
It's no longer encumbered for 2024.
Right.
Okay, so it's in, it's in the general fund, it's unappropriate. Now, you also had an agreement, you know, last week.
On the majority's.
That 900,000 of that would go towards a project.
Project line that would have to have agreement from the commissioners and council.
Exactly.
So, that at some point, they would have to appropriate that into that.
Correct, that's what I think.
That's what I think too.
And so, that remaining balance was then in that one-time column, which the total is 162,110 on line 23. I think as we speak today, those will be paid out of that existing $1.3 million one-time account. That's already appropriated.
Yeah, I would agree.
All right, and then line five, so that's projects finished, so you have 77,462 remaining unencumbered or is that going back into...
Well, that'll be, that's to be paid.
That needs to be paid, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
So, that's the only reason why I left that on there because it hadn't been paid yet.
Okay.
I'll pay it or probably will process it immediately.
Immediately done.
That'll go away.
Okay, good.
So, what is the total amount remaining that will require a majority vote of both council and commissioners?
There is 900,000 from our agreement and there is 600,000 that is still uncommitted in the ARPA budget.
Yep. So, 1.5 million even is yet earmarked.
Well...
I mean, yet, is still available, shall we say?
Correct.
And subject to majority agreement by both bodies?
Correct.
Individually, both bodies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That is correct.
Well, I think though, that 900,000, you identified projects.
No, we identified...
We had a list that...
We had them identified and then we chose to pay for them out of ARPA, out of the general fund. And so, now the general fund, we had an agreement that we voted on last week, two weeks ago, to, that to spend it, we would have to agree, council and commissioners, on how to spend that.
That 900,000 is general fund money.
Correct.
Yeah, I thought Mary Ann said ARPA.
Well, it is general fund money.
Well, it's in...
That we have an agreement with council that both bodies would have to agree to how it's spent.
I agree.
And the same thing with the 600,000.
900,000 plus the 600,000 unappropriated.
That is the total that is still available for projects.
It started life as ARPA.
Started off, that's right.
And now it's metamorphosizing into general fund.
And so, the 900,000 no longer has a requirement that it's spent, committed, contractually by the end of 2024.
Right, it protected that.
Could be, but it doesn't have to be. So, it's just the 600,000 of uncommitted ARPA that has to be committed by the end of 2024. Okay, thank you. I think we're all clear on that, I think. Yeah, what else have you got? Any other questions on your pledge?
We've had discussion about bumping out or accommodating the First Bank Expo Hall or storage area for tables and chairs.
Correct.
When do you anticipate us moving forward with that accommodation or storage area?
Well, I hope that I can get, because I think the storage area that I think that at least we want to look at will require some sort of determination of how it would connect to the building because it's just a three-sided building and how you waterproof the connection. I mean, I think I know, but I think we want to have something to show to a potential contractor of how we want that connected. And that in addition to a couple of other projects that's on this list, that council approved this morning, the Hardscape, the Front Plaza. So, I'm hoping to have someone from LWC in to talk with you folks. Hopefully, next week, we can get him in here. And that would be one of the projects to talk about.
So, you see that being a part of this year's, at least?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We hadn't really talked timing on that.
No, it needs to be.
Yeah.
Anything that's with ARPA money, it has to be under contract by the end of 2025.
And if it is a bump out or however we accommodate it most affordably, I would hope that in addition to just providing storage for our new furnishings, if you will, tables and chairs, that we do look at at least taking the first step toward a caterer's kitchen because...
I think it could be in that space.
And I, and I think, more requirements you put on the project, it adds to the space. This particular space, at least in my mind, is only going to be planned to be heated to something just above to keep the humidity out of the place and not something that's heated to be comfortable. In same way with cooling, you know, it's not going to be 72 degrees, just enough to keep the humidity. So...
It's logical that you would not need a caterer's kitchen unless tables and chairs would be removed from that storage area, right?
Well, but then, again, remember I talked about the main caterer who caters the largest dinners that we have out there is not necessarily, I don't want to say in favor, but he doesn't necessarily need a caterer's kitchen because of the way they're set up. They, they have equipment that all they do is come in and it's already, it's in trays and carts and they just need extra plugins, need extra sinks, extra work tables. They don't need cooking areas because it all...
No, you don't cook, you just need some microwave.
Well, they don't need microwave, it comes all prepared. They just plug in the carts and keep them heated.
That's one caterer. I mean, I think we need to really explore this beyond that one caterer.
But I think this is the largest caterer and I think if you satisfy that one, and I think there's a lot more projects out there that we could spend money. I'm not trying to disagree with you, I'm just suggesting that as you prioritize projects, the caterer's kitchen doesn't rise to the top of the list. Remember, we talked about a parking lot?
Parking lot?
Well, yeah, we need a parking lot.
We talked about a new ceiling.
I'm just saying, you know, we don't have to complete this, it's just that we might be making steps right now that could be far less costly to have a catering kitchen space that, you know, is, you know, most of the time not available as a caterer's kitchen because it is a storage space. Because the only time you would need really a caterer's kitchen space is when the tables and chairs are out of there.
Yeah, I think we're going to need to hire somebody to look at this anyway.
Yeah.
It may not be an architect, it may be an engineer, other things, to just make a connection between the walls.
Sure.
Yeah, but we could also look at, for example, what would it take to make sure there's enough power to be able to run equipment if it were at it at some point?
Just those steps that if done during construction now would be a whole lot cheaper than to have to rewire or rebuild. I'm just thinking if we...
I think we can talk through those issues as, as we get a little deeper into this, but...
And also showers, you know, I cannot give up the need for more accommodating showers at the fairgrounds. Has the fair committee had any further conversations about improving our showers at the fairgrounds?
They have, and again, you know, the task at hand is to prioritize the first needs and the showers has not risen to the top of the level. The first, first couple of items are parking, storage, new ceiling and lighting and cumin and insulation and painting in Expo Hall. Those were the top areas that need to be looked at. And so, if you look at the money that we're generating and money that is in the naming rights, there's not going to be money for a caterer's kitchen or showers unless you do something different from another source.
So, with the 250,000 from ARPA and 61,000 that's available still from naming rights, I mean, we're only at about $300,000. And that's, I'm not even sure that's going to be enough to build on the storage that I'm talking about, let alone all the other things. And parking, I think, really needs to be, it's not number one, it's number two.
Doorage and parking.
Committee, I mean, the commissioners haven't had any input on that.
So, from my perspective, it's probably number one, but they're both right up there at the top of this as the two highest priorities, so...
No, I understand, at the end of the day, it's the commissioner's call, but I'm suggesting I know, look at the committee. I understand.
I'm just thinking there are steps being taken with that bump out or finer accommodation that could make it far less costly down the road.
Okay, what else have you got, Steve? Any other questions on the list?
Not on that list, no, not for me. Okay, you also have before you the monthly report on weights and measures.
Correct.
You've seen this before and it's, this was pretty self-explanatory and pretty uneventful. The, this, everybody passed, everybody passed this, this past month and up to the right-hand corner of the comments, we give you the locations for the gasoline pump test, that was a new Sunoco station, actually, east. But a lot of time during the past month was spent doing those random package checks and this, these happened to be at Walmart this past month, and they all passed.
I have a question on this and I don't know if this is in the realm of what they do. I think the city found a scanner, scanner, or scammer, whatever you call it, does our department do that and look for that when they go out there?
They look for it, but we don't, we're not the enforcement, Clay. We look for it when we do those annual checks on the pumps.
And are those just identified physically that it looks like somebody's done something?
Pretty slick, you can't tell. A lot of times, there, the part where you put your carb in, it's loose and it's not as attached as firmly as the original. Sometimes you can't tell, you open up the pump and look inside of it, so that's when they, or they open it up and there's added equipment of some kind. And then we're continuing still rolling out the parking policy we've sent out to just about every department in this building as well as the health department. We've got back about a third response from them. What we send out is a spreadsheet as specific to each department and then they fill in drivers and they come back to us and we assign a placard number to them. We're about to start on the courthouse and those employees over there. I think you're already starting to see a change in the traffic pattern out here in the parking lot. The bank lot looks to me like when I come in, it's more full than it has been. I think you're starting to see people move to the parking lot, but that should, this rollout should be completed in the next week or so and we will get a pretty good return. Only just a couple of feedbacks that we've had, I know Jeff, we talked to the surveyor's office and we had taken away their reserve spot and they made a case of why they think they need that back. Other than that, it's been, been pretty smooth. Then, when do you want to get into this? This will take a little bit of time. This is the properties for the sale. You want to do that last or...
Yeah, why don't we come back to that?
You want to get Kim?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
You want to do this at the end?
Okay.
Before Kim's coming in, Gordon, you have a piece of paper in front of you that's got a highlight at the center part, which are some recommendations from the CDC as pertains to the new guidelines for COVID quarantine. And we need your input as to what you believe our protocol in the county should be. Historically, we have followed the CDC guidelines and so, in essence, this has taken away the quarantine period if in fact you become fever-free within a shorter period of time. I'll let Kim, did you get her?
So, it says here that if a fever was present, it has been gone without use of a fever-reducing medication, but it doesn't stipulate for 24 hours or anything. Does the 24 hours in the preceding sentence, you think applies to that?
I do. It's worded kind of awkward, but I do think that, yeah. If you read that as totality, I think that's the way it applies. At least that's the way it seems to me. But then I use words wrong occasionally.
Occasionally.
Not too often.
Little, you know, yogi-isms every now and then. Kim, any comment on the, on the change in guidelines?
No, I just wanted to remind you throughout the whole process of COVID, we typically have always followed the CDC guidelines or maybe you already said it before I got in, but...
He didn't.
He didn't? Shame on you.
I did.
You were saying, you did?
Don't let the old man... So, your recommendation is that we continue to follow CDC guidelines, I think that makes sense. But this guideline, you know, the second paragraph, we're encouraged to take the additional prevention strategies. So, we have, we have required that in the past. So, this suggestion is that it will be to the employee, whether they did these things?
Correct.
No longer to human resources or county.
I think the two of us were in agreement that the CDC is treating this like a normal, a regular virus such as the flu, so we don't monitor employees with the flu.
They come around to like what we all knew already.
I know. So, I mean, I think that's their interpretation is it's like the flu and...
And they even give that example that they, that was their goal to treat this as the flu or any other respiratory illness.
And so, do these guidelines, do we currently apply them to somebody who has the flu or RSV or something else?
The only time I get involved with any type of illness for an employee is if they miss more than three days and then I start asking questions. Typically, if they have the flu, they're at home.
Has absenteeism over the last three months been noticeable, noteworthy? Because I know there've been reports in Ohio, the really high flu state, but this has not been a real issue this winter?
I'm not seeing it. We get all the time off requests through Cronos for simply for the employees. I'm not seeing anything that's out of the ordinary.
And they're, they're currently required to, to be off for five days, right, or for isolation?
For COVID?
Right. And so, you're not, you're not seeing any unusual activity there.
I'm not being notified by the departments.
So, your recommendation is that we go with... So your recommendation is that we go with, with these new CDC guidelines?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion?
Second?
We have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
Probably about the only time you need to.
You with the CDC. I would expect them to, because they've always done the same thing.
They've always followed CDC guidelines, so I, I can't imagine, but, but I'll be happy to talk to Dr. Jeff Moore and, um, see if they have any differing guidelines, but I, I think their policy has always been to follow CDC guidelines, so I.
Before we share this widely, a disaster check.
So do you want me to notify employees now, or do you want to wait till you check with the help?
Let's talk to the health department, see if they have any major objections. In fact, if you want, if you want to go call.
I will.
Right after, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Um, okay. See, Tim, you're supposed to be here at two fifteen. Are you going to follow up with Tim?
Would you like me to? Okay.
While he's doing that, why don't we go ahead with claims?
Okay.
Something to talk about last week, so we can fill the time here.
Move for approval of following claims. Boston Mutual dated February twenty-ninth, state and local tax withdrawals dated February twenty-ninth, and regular claims dated today, March sixth, and an IT claim for switches dated March one, an advance draw for Richmond Community Schools, uh, dated March fourth. Move for approval of all of the above.
Have a motion and a second to approve the claims mentioned? Any further discussion?
Ian, how much was the advance draw for us here?
Two hundred and four thousand.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
And as far as the minutes are concerned, I would like to defer approval of those while we had some discussions about this new system. I contacted Craig, haven't heard back from him, as to this new technology that can make it easier, better, more improved. Don't quite know what the purpose, what the goals was, see if we're maximizing the benefits of that, but.
Yes, Dr. Craig, it is a significant change from the way previous minutes read to the way these AI-enhanced minutes read, so.
Just let us know if you get any councilmen or anybody else wondering why they haven't been posted. We just don't want to post them yet. I think my greatest concern is the attribution of direct quotes. It's kind of hard for you to tell the way this system now reads is, it's hard to tell exactly where a direct quote, where opinions are spoken, you know, an, an opinionated quotation, you know, it's like, uh, we believe, or this is the case in a situation. It's hard to know to whom that, uh, opinion or point of view is being attributed with that, uh, direct lifting of a quotation.
Continue to look at this, but by next week, we need to go back.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
You said you had something?
Yeah, last week you'd asked me to talk to our insurance provider about the Buckland Association Associates appraisal. Uh, after speaking with Lyons, who spoke with Liberty Mutual, said they recommend that we go forward to have this done, so that when we go to market, that we have fresh values to present to them, um, to better help our situation of renewing.
So that is a, a contract proposal. Seen this from Buckland?
I think you had a letter, I mean, yeah.
I mean, that's essentially what it is. It's for what, about four thousand dollars?
Forty-one hundred, I believe.
So the advice from the insurance company is that we go ahead and do this at least every other year?
I think our concern is duplicating, and that's something the area insurance company was going to do, right? I don't agree with you.
Yeah, I got the impression that they are not going to do it this year, so they recommended that we have up-to-date values to go to market.
So is there enough information there to, uh, to enter into a contract? I can't remember. It's been a minute since I saw it.
I think the scope's pretty thorough.
And it's forty-one hundred dollars.
It's broken down into two different, two thousand dollars and then twenty-one hundred.
Hi, Tim.
Hello?
Come on in, we're almost ready for you. So, we have the, the Ron Cross seal of approval to approve.
Okay.
Okay? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Buckland Associates for appraisals for forty-one hundred.
Do we have a second? We have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
One signature?
Tim?
Yes.
Come on up. A Nexus contract and a Beacon contract?
Yes, and I was just explaining to Bobby, kind of off, off to the side, I think we had a little, a slight miscommunication. I was, I don't, I, I was going to forward that to, uh, Mr. Cross, and I had not yet done so, and I was going to see if I could, uh, have this hearing, or the, you guys go review it after the fact, so I totally apologize for that.
Okay.
The background, it's the personal property, uh, reviews that we've done in the past. Um, they have hired someone else, uh, to take, Tony Garrison was the longstanding, uh, personal property expert at Nexus, and he passed away from cancer, so they have finally found somebody, um, to fulfill that role, so they're going to see if they could start the, um, process of doing the reviews again. Um, and then the other situation was a, was a Beacon Schneider that we have for our GIS. They have a program that we've had, we had it years ago, that does, that helps us with the calculation of agricultural land or splits and combines, speeds up the process, and, uh, it's going to see if there's a possibility of, of, of implementing that, so. I have them downstairs. Um, again, it was, it was a miscommunication, uh, maybe on my part, so I apologize for that.
Can you get them to Ron?
Yeah.
Or him to review, and we can put this on the calendar for next week?
Yeah. Yeah. Again, appreciate your understanding that. It was, Jenny came up about me, I was like, uh, hopefully we're doing that later, so apologize, so. All right, I'll get that to Ron.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Looks like this contract probably has some information that Steve, uh, and Bobby need to get together on and, and update, answer some questions here, so, uh, I'll. To you all, and when you've had a chance to do that, get me in, I'll sign it. Thank you.
If you did that on that agenda, I didn't think so.
So, um, highway claim held over from last week.
We're going to wait and see, um, how the first, how the first one, the windshield.
Oh, yes, okay, this is a, a, an insurance claim. And so, we haven't, have we heard back from the insurance company yet?
I haven't.
Okay, I haven't either, so. We, we did, remember we had, we had two claims, uh, one that was supposedly a gravel. One of our highway trucks kicked up off the road and hit, hit a windshield and, and broke the windshield. And so we turned that in to see how a claim like that would be handled. Second one was, uh, a, a claim that salt from the salt, a salt truck, uh, came out over a car, uh, and caused some paint damage, uh, as well as, was there a crack in the windshield too? So, we're going to hold off on that until we see how the, uh, how the gravel claim was handled, so we'll follow up with, with Lyons and see where we're at with that, and make a decision on whether or not to turn that in. Okay. Hotel increase, do we have somebody else that needs it?
Yep. Um, forty quart, they're wanting to increase from one thirty to one thirty-nine and nine for June forty-sixth, that's when she'll explain to them.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve that increase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Steve, I think we're ready to come back to you on these, uh, buildings for the deed sale.
All right. She did jab before you, is as of February twenty-fifth, with a couple of changes after that, we're going to do these, and what we're looking for today is to start determining which one of these properties you think you want to keep in the sale and which ones you don't want. So I have a set of pictures that correspond with the number of that far right-hand column. So these are, the pictures are in order.
Okay.
List on top of down, okay. You go to that second, or actually the third, the third column from the right, it'll tell you the page number that corresponds with that property. Okay. So that first property, uh, D and J Homes is the owner. You can see what the taxes that are owed on that. It appears from most recent photos that you took in a couple of days ago, that it is occupied, and I would suggest that it probably is, with my familiarity with D and J, that it probably is a rental.
It looks like an RV from.
It's a mobile home. It's a line over. And if you look at the picture number three, you know, this is a little bit old, I suspect trash and, and junk that's there in the back is probably why this might have been targeted by the city for an unsafe building order. But according to our latest information, this has a pending, uh, unsafe building order against it. Do we know what that is for? No, I've sent this information to the city, asking for that input. I talked to a city rep on Monday, as you see, and the latest email that I got yesterday from her was that they didn't know information from their, uh, enforcement department. So I, I think I told her that we absolutely need to know by next Wednesday.
You said number three?
Number three is an aerial of that same property.
Oh, it's the same property?
Which are one, two, and three are that same?
And that corresponds to the very top property?
Yes.
So there's.
You can see in that third column from the right, the picture that corresponds with that.
How, how can we know how many pictures are of one property?
There, there's on the far right, the third column from the far right.
Oh, page is one, two, three, okay, now I see.
We're going to hold off on that one. The next one is picture number four. As we speak today, I see no reason that this should not be in the sale.
Do either of you recall which of these properties you have, um, spoken with, uh, Tim Pearson about?
I think this is one.
I, I'd have to go back to mine, I can't remember.
I know he mentioned, I mean, New Paris Pike was one of them.
Stuck in my mind.
Yeah, that one looks ideal for what they're talking about. So before we release them?
Yeah, we'll need to double-check those.
Yeah, but if you wanted to, it needs to be in your name anyway, right?
Yeah, so we're going to get it over.
This is okay.
We just don't want to give it to Richmond, yeah.
So, Ron, have you done any further investigation of whether the county can directly turn over one of these properties to a not-for-profit?
Depends on what the not-for-profit's organized for purposes.
So.
Educational, uh, you know, what?
Need to see their 501(c)(3) filing?
Educational, recreational?
Yeah, I mean, uh, it, it's limited, it's not just any not, not-for-profit.
In this case, it would be educational, because the intention is to train people.
Who's the not-for-profit?
Bridges for Life. I'm going to see Jeff and Tim tomorrow. I could ask them to provide their 501(c)(3) filing to you.
That'd be helpful.
I don't think it, okay, that's fine.
Why don't you give us a copy of that? Okay, but that, that should go into our name?
Yes.
Is it agreed? Okay.
Okay, um, picture number five, this one, I don't understand.
I agree with you.
I was looking at that one too, I'm like.
Fifteen hundred dollars, it's going to.
And it's, and that thought it looked occupied, obviously you can see, you know, it's, it's got a lawnmower out to the side there, thought there were curtains in the window, but I think as we speak today, this should be in your name, but I don't know, I'm almost thinking somebody needs to try to reach out to these folks, make sure that they've received this.
So this says that it's, it's owned by a bank trust?
Yeah. Um, I, this one, this one was a surprising one.
I would agree, but I, let's put it, you know, transfer at this point, but, yeah, let's see what we can find out about that one.
Number six, six and seven, this is actually in Dublin, and as you can see, it's got some fees against it. Part of the taxes owed are special assessment fees, which generally means somebody's done something. It could be sewer fees, it could be, in this case, somebody's boarded this up, uh, it could have been a charge, charge to, correct, to.
Is that a second property belonging to this in the back? Because that second outbuilding is.
It, it is, yeah. That's a lien to you.
Whatever that is.
Is there a mobile home back there that was part of this?
That goes, no, that's the next person. Mobile Home Park back there.
So that blue structure is a mobile home that doesn't belong to?
Yeah, clear to the back, it, that, you can see there's a road that separates that, there's several mobile homes along that road.
Well, if you have picture number six?
Yes. Oh, I see where you're talking about. I, I don't know the answer to that.
That blue structure looks like.
Definitely looks like a single light back there, but I don't know if it's on this property. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Can we find out on that?
What's your thoughts on this one?
Without knowing what the, uh, special assessment is, it's kind of hard to know. Any idea what the dollar amount of that special assessment is?
Yeah, it's, it's in that.
Total is twenty-one hundred and forty-six dollars.
But you don't know what, how much is taxed and how much is special assessment?
I could tell, I don't know by this, but you could tell by looking at the property
You think that's a tear down? It looks like something has been torn down already, like the porch, was that a porch?
It's like getting that fallen off.
It could have fallen. Let's, um, let's check and see with, uh, with Sarah Mitchell, whether this is one that Dublin has requested be in the, in the life remediation program.
And according to the property card, there is residence, a detached garage, and then two lien toes. Mention of a mobile home on it.
And on the, on. Number seven. Number seven, it doesn't look like it's on the same parcel.
Have to be the same color as the writing.
All right, I'll check with her. Then number eight.
Ooh, lot of.
This one, you can see it's got, when I say demo fees, that's just the way it comes, then obviously it's not been demoed. They've done, the city has done something to this property. Some fees added to it, it's, it's abandoned, there's nobody living there, it's, it's you can see it's got on the right hand side, it does have, looks like a piece of plywood. They may have done some work to this to board it up at one time, it's been since ripped off. They do have an assessment against the person fees need to see that. Probably three or $4,000 in fees they probably got against this.
And so we, those fees out of the $6,500 that's, that's against it now. Some of those are fees versus taxes.
So the judge can't forgive those?
Yeah, it all gets wiped off, yeah.
Oh, even the, okay.
It's all taken, taken off parole if they've been certified it.
It will be.
Does the city, does the city have any desire for any of these?
Well, that's, we're, we told them we need to know by next week, so. It's not been real fast to respond to us.
Maybe we can have a more productive conversation after we hear back from the city.
Well, some of these are pretty obvious though, I think, and get into them.
So this one, we're just gonna wait for the city then?
I mean, I think, I think we put it in the sale file.
Until we hear from them. I like that idea too, because I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, and if they lose their fees, that's their lack of.
I agree. And then nine, ten. This one.
Man, that is.
Yeah, I thought narrow house. There was nothing popped out to us as a short.
Say put it on that to be in the sale.
Then number 11, you can see that there are fees against this, and you can see that there's some there's some 40 up on the side.
Same lien included until we find out.
You think that's all taxes? Oh, UVO, oh, unsafe building, okay.
And then number 12, so before we go on. It says UVO fees. So, in this case, they boarded up that apartment. They have some other things around the rest of the house, but do we know whether or not there's a demolition order on, on these houses? So that's what we're hoping to find out, so we really need to push that. But for the moment, I would say that stays in the sale.
Obviously, I, I can't, looking at this one, I wouldn't think this, because it doesn't look like it.
No.
Other one, like.
Okay.
Now number 12, this is again, one that, remember, remember how we have that lag sometimes of when they have UVO order and taxes? So number 12, obviously the building's gone. And there's only $1,300 on the delinquency. And I've looked, and there's never been any demo fees added to this. So, are they to come yet is, is the question.
Because at this point, we're talking about the sale of their lot.
And, and so we sold us their lot, and then the city comes back and said, hey, now there's $10,000 against this.
They still have the ability to go against the former property.
I understand, I'm just, this one, the things that you guys brought in.
Which nature clarifies it.
And I think that our issue really is if there is a demolition order against a house that we sell. And then after we sell it as a house, they come in and tear it down and, and add the demolition cost to the new owner's bill. And I wanna make sure we don't, we do that as, as seldom as humanly possible.
That's why we're doing this, but again, we're, as far as our, you know, short of me going over and looking directly into their files.
It may come to that.
I'll come with you. But that's where we are on this property.
Yeah, we don't wanna ever have that happen.
There, there should have been some fees certified.
You'd think, I mean, it, somebody took the house down. And it, and it had, it had an unsafe building order against it at some point in time.
Maybe it fell down so they didn't have to pay.
And it's been a long time, because that.
Self-straft.
That grass has been growing.
And number 13, this has got a, some demo, you can see the fees against it, so my, obviously I'm assuming that with the condition of this house and the fact that it's boarded up, that UVO has been satisfied.
So meaning that boarding it up was what was required.
Doesn't necessarily have to be torn down.
Which would at least somewhat imply that it's salvageable. So I think that should go, you know, we should, we should take possession of that and put it in the sale.
Under no scenario do we, if it goes into commissioner's deed sale and generates a lot of money, I mean, that, that still doesn't mean these fees get paid. That's what people don't understand. There's no such thing as surplus fund in the deed sale.
So Jim, the thing we need to guard against is some action being taken against this property after we sell it to somebody in the deed sale.
Okay, so number 14, 15, this is a bit different, this is a bare lot. When you look at 14, it's that house or that structure you see on the left is not on the lot. Nor is the structure you see on the right on the lot. Nor is that house, that little structure to the back on the lot. It's where you see right about the center, those brown weeds, that's about where that lot starts. So if you go to the second, number 15, item, or page 15, you can see this lot. Now, the lot does have access through where you can see a platted road, albeit it's not there. But it's, it's the extension of South 15th, so there is access to that lot. But to look at it, it's got, there's trees there, so my point to you is those snotland logs. Not land logs.
Access through the planted south.
The owner of this property, there's only 900 bucks owed on it. The owner of the property lives in Tennessee. And the surveyor's office just simply wanted me to make sure that you were aware of the the configuration location of this lot before you determine whether you want to sell it or not.
So this is the one highlighted in yellow here?
Yeah.
As long as they'll have access through that.
How are the cops, how are the houses in that neighborhood, did you see how the M Street just not, I mean, this is possibly a lot.
It's certainly a large enough lot, but I mean, in my opinion, if you put it in the sale.
I'd take those.
So, if it doesn't sell.
I know.
That's a lot of grass.
I mean, that's the, that's the challenge here.
It is the challenge.
If I was 1506 South M, that's probably who's gonna buy that.
I would think so.
Be a nice pocket park for the property.
And that that house, the white house to the right, I'm assuming is 1506.
Yeah. Yeah.
Put it in the sale? I do, I, I just have a concern that essentially so with South 15th Street being planted but not there, if somebody wanted to access it, I mean, they could drive on South 15th Street, but they couldn't driveway on there, right? They'd have to, the city would have to do something for it, yeah. Or else they'd have to put a road in that met with city specs, and that's not gonna happen. Is it, is it possible, short of, of taking possession of it, to somehow market it to the just, just properties around it, the contiguous properties?
Well, it looks like, we, you can't see it from there, but somebody's been using it.
I would think.
It looks like it's got a bonfire area.
Now, can you tell if 1506 South M is owner occupied?
I mean, I have no way to tell that.
Oh, I thought you were on the.
I can get on the GIS, it just tells the owner.
Doesn't tell you whether they live there, right?
Yeah, it just tells the owner of record.
Yeah. I mean, it'd at least tell you if the owner is local. I mean, if the owner's in Louisiana, the odds of that owner being interested in purchasing the property are probably not as good. Certainly enhance that 1506 property.
What'd you, what'd you say about 14?
We didn't.
I'd just like to know who owns 1406. Or 1506, 1506. 1506, South M Street.
And you know, again, that could be one of those circumstances where the neighbors are using it, but they don't have to pay property taxes on it if they don't.
Correct.
There might not be a whole lot of bidders with bidding starting at a hundred dollars.
And that's what I'm concerned about is.
I don't wanna mow it all summer.
Well, nor would I. So, okay, we're.
Location, the owner of record has the same address as the location address, which
somehow would be roughly a resident there.
1506, and, and that address is local, is the owner local?
Yeah, it's the same address.
Oh, okay, great, great. That's what I was hoping to hear.
Okay, so picture 16, obviously that house has been demolished. You can see the fees, the city has put their demolition fees on it.
So, correction on those, do we not want to?
No, I, I, you know, we're asking the city.
So we're still waiting on that, because if we put it in there, they lose their.
Correct, but I think, I think.
Just add it in there and let them tell us not to.
I'd like to hear from them, yeah.
What, but if you didn't, for them to get it, it's gotta go to your name. We'd have to give it to them that way.
Oh.
So if you, if you don't put it in their name, then it just stays that way and the lien stays on it.
You have more phantom taxes.
Yeah.
So, somebody has to maintain.
I think regardless of whether the city wants it or not, this goes in the list to sell.
17,000 owned on that bare lot?
Yeah.
They, they tore down the house.
And look who the owner is there.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
17, we know, 16 or 17?
16.
17, the same thing.
17, 16, we know the owners aren't local.
16, well, I don't know where Malinger lives, I think he's a local guy.
Land of time.
With mayor's name.
These are sons of the older guy.
17's the same thing, it's a lot that the, in the model. That's a.
That's a big lot.
That's a looks like a nice building, a lot there.
That could be something the city would be interested in for, in for housing. Because that, that should be big enough to build on again, some of them are so narrow that they couldn't. Okay, 18?
18 is the, there's fees against this, and it's, it's the garage that was removed, was torn aside of it.
The house looks, um.
I think that should go in the sale.
I agree.
19, 20, and 21, now this is a, this is a dandy. So taxes, the unpaid taxes are actually it's, it's a double lot, so if you go to picture 21, there's two houses on this lot.
So in picture 19, it's those two houses that are in that picture.
One in front of you has the Butler Street address, which is what's listed here. Second house that you see in the back of it is a J, Northwest J Street address, but they're both on the same lot. And there were, there has some of these fees. Apparently there was trash on here. And I can kind of look at just a little bit on the aerials, I don't know, because there's a lot of debris. But that has since been cleaned up, so the city has added some trash fees to this. And and that thought that, that the Butler Street one may be occupied. This has a moving roller out there, I think you see the meters still on the side of the house. So the fees are $2,000 for both houses, so. We ought to conclude that. And then 22, this obviously has had a house removed from it. $17,000 fees. And then 23, now this has, this has special assessment fees against it, so the city has done something to it. They've not boarded it, but they, they've had some action on this house. Those green signs in the windows is, was put on there by the city that says unfit for human habitation, is what they say. And if you look inside the windows, it's partially gutted, some of the drywall's been taken off and there's trash in it. Structure itself is sound, it, it looks sound, the structure looks like it's sound.
Looks like it's a double also, so.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it was a, it was a duplex, but.
Which does not look sound, the base of the porch, but the roof of the porch looks relatively sound.
Okay, so I think we ought to include this.
Yeah. I wouldn't wanna be the one going in.
And then 24 is a lot.
What about the house to the right of that, is that on our list?
What?
Right, is it on our list all the way?
Think it is. Yet. And then that next one, I don't have a picture of it, but it had been removed already, so you see that, mind you, it hasn't been removed. Okay. Picture 25 is also a bare lot, this is, that's why the the, the $10,000 in fees. And number 26, this is one year old.
I do not think we want that.
Nope. Seven, a little narrow lot. See, I mean, that house, you can almost imagine that somebody's using that lot. I almost imagine that, uh, somebody's using that lot. But I looked, I went back, because this is very narrow, and I looked back in the aerials and it did have a real narrow building down that, at one time. That's why it's got, um, almost fifteen thousand dollars worth of fees against it.
Raised the cost of demolition because it's so close to the other buildings. Forty-five, check up. So what you're looking at?
Twenty-seven?
Yes. I think we had an, I think the health department had a unfit, uh, uninhabitable order on it at the same time the city was doing its unsafe building. Uh, it went all the way through there. That, that's, didn't demolish. They, they took a building down. That's the one I'm thinking about. So do we want to include that in the sale?
Yeah, I think we'll include it, and again, you're wanting to hear back from the cities, you can see how some of these are.
That's not a buildable lot. So there's only one potential, maybe two, but with the massiveness of the fence on it to the left, they're probably not gonna take the fence down to have access to that.
And twenty-eight, uh, it's an empty lot. Obviously, it's been there for some time, empty. Actually, don't let that whole thing, it's not the whole thing. There's actually two lots there. The one with the tree, I think, is the one you're looking at.
They turned sixteen dollars in taxes.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine, um,
the house or the lot?
It's the lot. Thirty, and then thirty.
The city does not want it, as far as I can tell.
And then thirty-one, it's a lot. It's had a house demoed on it at one point in time. Two, again, it's had a house on it at one point in time.
It's a nice big lot.
Thirty-three, thirty-three is the lot to the right.
Not the house.
Not the house.
The house is the two, this is nine and eight. Lot to the right.
Thirty-four is a lot.
Hey, thirty-three wasn't a lot?
Yeah. It's, it's to the right of that house.
To the right of that house.
And then thirty-five, this is one that has called the auditor. They want to redeem it. Passed our timeframe to redeem, so it comes to you for consideration. The gentleman who owns this indicates that it is a rental. Tax statements went to this house and the, the person that was rental tore them up and sort of, yeah. We all know that the taxes are due twice a year anyway, but, uh, in any event, the, uh, the person, Mr. Mills, is asking to redeem this.
What's going on in the property card? Is that the address or?
Yes.
The owner's address is, is four eleven?
Yeah.
You know, it's not on the records, but. Change that. Wild. Can we make that a stipulation of letting it after the deadline? Is that we want to actually mail the property tax bill to, to him, not to his tenant? You ought to be able to get that done, yeah. Let's do that. If he puts his address on it.
I kind of like, I wonder if he has other properties that are in arrears. We don't know much about this property owner.
Okay.
That house looks like it's been pretty well cared for.
It's four eleven North Eighteenth.
Well, the property card shows address of Dinkytown Road, Brownsville, Indiana. So the tax bill should be, should be going to his house.
Should be going to there. They're not going to four eleven.
Yeah. Isn't that what the story that Selena told us was that?
She didn't tell me.
That's what I wanted to verify before we said that. I'm like, according to this, the tax bill should be going to his address. Remember, she sent you that.
If the SRA notices, will probably go to the occupants of the property too, so he may be, they may be because, I mean, I, I got to stack that big for the health department.
I don't have any reason why we wouldn't want him to redeem it. I mean, we don't want it. I mean-
I think we should let him redeem it.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
I, yeah, we're, I just don't think we have the whole story, and I think he's maybe put them in.
Or this, miscommunication, but I have no-
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather give him a out rather than kick somebody out of this home.
So there's motion and a second?
Yeah.
To allow him to redeem? Do we want to put a time limit on it? So we could still put it in the sale?
What's our, what's our time limit for this?
What's our deadline?
Oh.
He needs to do it within a week.
I'd say by next Wednesday.
Fourteen hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Yeah. Who's responsible for contacting him and the?
So we need to call Selena, follow up with her.
I'll get with her after a meeting.
So there's a motion that we allow him to redeem it if he does that next week. Further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries.
And with that stipulation that he does have his correct address for-
Yeah, I think we have the timeline on the tax, on the deed sale.
Yeah, yeah.
When, when the court issue tax be?
Twentieth of March.
Twentieth of March.
Twentieth of March.
March.
All right. Thirty-six, thirty-six is a bare lot, and just so, thirty-seven aerial of that bare lot, just so you understood, it doesn't, it's not a deep lot. There's multiple bare lots behind it, so thirty, the, the lot that's in question is that one closest to it, right around the corner. Yep. And thirty-eight is pretty evident for what the fees are for. Out, looks, you know, fairly okay, but they boarded it up. Okay. Put that in. Yep. And then thirty-nine. Same thing. And then forty is the lot. Forty is that big lot, yeah. Now, a couple of other ones I think you want to consider, at least to talk about, remember, we still have that lot that we had talked about, give them the spur. That is currently in our name.
Right.
And then, I have not gotten any response from that lady of the one where we saw her. Do you know any, she was the, doing property owner. She was taken care of. And I talked to her, any person, talked on the phone, left her phone message, and I'm like, hold on.
Definitely did your part, so. I would say, and leave her, leave her one phone message that says, if you want it, if you want it, I'll find next, it's Wednesday, or we'll put it in the sale.
This is the lot, this is where she lives.
Right, right.
It, it's that lot right there.
And she owns all of that around it?
She owns all of it.
Yeah, except for that.
She's been moaning? Yep. And she's wanted to approach me about it, and I told her to do the negative work. I say put it in and-
I'll give her one more call. Call her till next week.
All right. Okay, I'll update this list.
That goes back to that, it was, it was, it was a part of a, an exchange of property that we needed to be able to have enough right of way by one of the bridges in the gorge that is being replaced. Subsequently, Ron worked out an agreement where we don't have to do that. I may have dropped the ball on getting back with spur to see if they still want it. So why don't we, why don't we check with them again? And again, they are a recreational and educational entity, so I would think we could give it directly to them. So I'll see if he can get me a copy of the five oh one C three. Guti was the president last year. I'm not sure if he still is or not, but check with him, try to get a decision by, by next week, so we can decide if we, okay, it's your sale. I'll update this with the notes that we generate today and get that two moves that we're all bearing with that. Okay. Thank Bobby. What have we not covered?
Uh, this morning, council had agreed to create those two funds. We just need a few measures, measures to adopt them also.
Funds for-
The highway department, highway crossings.
These are for community crossings, projects, and, uh, my quantity. Create funds on the line items, so that if, if they do get their application funded, that there's a place for the money to go, so it's separate.
See the fund numbers, huh? I moved to create the, uh, two highway funds to accommodate the receipt of funding, should it arrive.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries.
Speaking of funds, the county did just receive three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-three opioid settlement uh, funding from the state. Plus twenty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars in twenty twenty-four funding from the Walgreens settlement. So that, um, we now need to have our, um, guidelines for awarding of opioid settlement funds together, so next week, I frankly didn't expect this to come until late March, as they said, late first quarter, so, um, and this is not all we'll receive this year, but I think it will be months before we receive any more of the twenty twenty-four settlement, and I think this is all of the twenty twenty-three uh, opioid settlement funding that we will receive. Uh, but there's quite a lot more to come from retailers. And, um, uh, but, uh, the total was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, and we've already seen some so altogether over four hundred thousand this year. And, um, that's, that's good, in the bank.
Start having some conversations next week about, uh, how we want to proceed with these. Anything else? If not, go in once, go in twice, and return.